Good evening. This is our regularly scheduled city council meeting. It is Tuesday, October 17th at 6:00 PM. And as always, we will start our city council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can the city clerk please take a roll?
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Jay David Reed.
Present.
Dave Frank. Dave Frank?
He's muted.
We see him.
You there, Dave?
I'm here, but I have no audio from you.
Okay, well, we can hear you now.
Should I continue with roll call?
Yeah, continue with roll call.
Doug Glassbell?
Okay, he's got it.
Okay, I'll go back to Dave Frank. Present.
Present.
Doug Glassbell?
Present.
Ed Ullinberry?
Here.
All city councilors are present.
Thank you very much. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then we're going to start with a proclamation in support of Bullying Prevention Month. And if Maya Haynes and Joy Montoya-Bois from Pure Kindness will join me right here up front, we'll do it together.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for being here.
So this proclamation on behalf of the City of Montrose is for Bullying Prevention Month for October 2023. Whereas bullying is unwanted aggressive behavior among school-aged children that involves a real or perceived power imbalance. The behavior is repeated or has the potential to be repeated over time. The children who are bullied, those who bully others, and those who witness the behaviors may have serious lasting problems. And whereas bullying occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, community organizations, and online through technology. And whereas various researchers have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence affecting millions of American children and adolescents annually. And whereas thousands of Colorado children and adolescents are affected by bullying annually, and one in five students reports being bullied. And whereas targets of bullying behaviors are at an increased risk for depression, anxiety, sleep difficulties, lower academic achievement, and dropping out of school. And students who repeatedly experience bullying behaviors often fear such activities as riding the bus, going to school, interacting online, and attending community activities. And whereas children who engage in bullying behaviors are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors. And whereas children who witness bullying behaviors often feel less safe, helpless to stop it, and intimidated. And whereas organizations such as Pure Kindness are dedicated to providing support to children and adolescents experiencing the bullying cycle and providing prevention education through partnerships with youth, schools, youth-serving programs, and community leaders and organizations to reduce bullying and foster a pure kindness stand, positive, encouraging, empathetic, respectful, and kind. We urge all citizens to work towards the prevention of bullying and consider pledging to be part of the solution to end bullying in all of its forms. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Montrose, Colorado, do hereby proclaim October 23, 2023, as Bullying Prevention Month in the City of Montrose, and urge all community members to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our communities safer for all children and adolescents. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, thank you, council members. We just want to say thank you. We know it starts with the adults. And so at Pure Kindness, we really focus on the spectrum of connection. And so while our why is an occurrence, an incident of a young girl dying by suicide in 2015, we, through this work, have seen kiddos experiencing hard behaviors, challenges, and we have created a safe space at 207 South Fourth. So since we've been in our building, tremendous outpouring of youth and families coming, navigating that spectrum of connection. And as adults, we know how many positive interactions it takes to counterbalance every negative interaction. And so the pure kindness part is based in science, evidence-based. We know that youth want to feel heard. They want to feel seen. They want to be validated. And sometimes they want a trusted adult who isn't going to ask anything of them or judge them. So it takes us all. About 70% of bullying stops when another young person interferes or intervenes. And it always stops when the adults do not allow the behavior in the first place. So thank you for making this proclamation. It's us as adults and you all as city leaders who make this work possible.
Thanks for being here. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Next on our agenda is the call for public comment for non-agenda items. Is there anyone here for a non-agenda item public comment? Seeing none, we will forego reading all of the language that goes with public comment and continue moving forward with our agenda tonight. Item seven is approval of minutes. And this is council consideration of the minutes of the October 2nd, 2023 Special City Council meeting and the October 3, 2023 Regular City Council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 2nd, 2023 Special City Council meeting and the October 3rd, 2023 Regular City Council meeting as presented.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second, so please vote electronically. And that passes unanimously. Moving on to item eight, Ordinance 2643, first reading. Every ordinance must be read and voted on twice, so this is the first time we'll be reading and voting on this ordinance. This is council consideration of Ordinance 2643 on first reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, adding a new, adding new sections, five, six, and seven, to Title One, Chapter Nine of the Official Code of the City of Montrose concerning campaign finance regulations for the City of Montrose municipal elections. And we took a whole team. So we have our attorneys and our city clerks, so I'm not sure who's kicking it off.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'll start.
Thank you.
This ordinance has been discussed twice previously in work sessions, so I'll just give you an executive summary to make a record for you today. Anyone wishing to look those other meetings up can find them on September 1st and October 2nd of this year. The ordinance in both clean and a working red line format can be found in your packets. The Colorado Legislature recently passed House Bill 23-1245, which is applicable to municipal elections unless a municipality adopts its own local regulations. It was codified as part of the Fair Campaign Practices Act in the Colorado Revised Statutes. Some things it did were to set new campaign finance limits, and it set reporting deadlines. As a result, you asked us to bring you an ordinance in response to keep our current practices in place and not have them replaced by default by this new law. The ordinance in front of you does just that. We currently don't have campaign funding limits, and the ordinance keeps that the same. It also adopts local disclosure deadlines and campaign finance reporting-related procedures as we had none previously. In addition, it clarifies records retention. Everything not addressed in the ordinance would default back to state law and the Secretary of State's regulations in the Colorado Code of Regulations. Per your request, we did not try to reinvent the wheel in this ordinance, and instead we reference those state laws and regulations instead of trying to rewrite them. Our excellent city clerk is here and may wish to also speak to you, Ms. Del Piccolo.
I think you covered it very well. Thank you. I just would like to add, anyone who is, would like to be a candidate in our upcoming election and has been a candidate in the past would find the procedure very much the same. There are no significant changes to the way candidates will make reports.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council, any questions or discussion before we hold the hearing? Okay, then because we are doing an ordinance before the hearing, I'll open that hearing and would accept any public comment on this item. Seeing none, I'll close the hearing and would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 24, or 2643 on first reading as presented.
Second.
Thank you, please vote.
Next up on our agenda, item nine, is Ordinance 2644, also the first reading of this ordinance. This is council consideration of Ordinance 2644 on first reading. This is an ordinance repealing and replacing Title VI, Chapter One, Section 21, otherwise known as 6-1-21, regarding unreasonable noise. And I will turn this over to our Assistant City Attorney, Matt Magliaro.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Here on a proposed ordinance 2644, which will, if approved, amend one section of the unreasonable noise ordinance, MC 6-1-21, proposed amendment would be to section D only. A red line version appears on pages 31 through 33 of tonight's session packet, a clean version on the pages preceding, pages 28 through 30. This was discussed at a recorded work session held on October 2nd of this year. There have been no changes made to the proposal since the presentation and discussion at the work session. Just go through it, executive summary here. During the work session, the discussion went a little broader into aspects of the unreasonable noise ordinance itself. By way of discussion, executive summary here, the only change would be to subsection D. That sets forth an evidentiary presumption. Basically, the court or the fact-finder can take it that the sound is unreasonable if sound is broadcast under certain conditions from a motive vehicle specific to here. The change would be to strike similar and replace it with emitted from any to modify the equipment and broaden the types of equipment that can emit unreasonable noise beyond the sound's system speakers. A last sentence would also be added here, demian immaterial for the presumption if the equipment emitting the sound was originally installed on the vehicle, installed subsequently, modified subsequently, or is emitting sound due to damage or defect. Under any of these circumstances, whether it's an aftermarket muffler, a factory-installed engine, or a damaged exhaust system, equipment emitting sound can be unreasonable if emitted from that equipment, if it's audible within other motive vehicles on the road with the windows up, or audible within occupied structure with the doors and windows closed, and the other elements of the ordinance violation in A are met. This is one of those time, place, and manner restrictions, so context matters. So for example, if a person parks an F-150 outside someone's home in a residential neighborhood and revs the factory-installed engine repeatedly at 3:00 AM and then burns out of the neighborhood spinning the tires, and that activity can be heard inside the home with doors and windows closed, that person could be cited for unreasonable noise despite it being done by all factory-installed original equipment. The change would allow more easily for prosecutions in that case by giving rise to the presumption in evidence. So it's more likely for prosecutions of the ordinance in that circumstance to be successful. I want to point out and emphasize here, there's no change to the elements, the essential elements of the ordinance violation, which are set forth in subsection A. Concerns about arbitrary enforcement are addressed by the requirement that the violation of the ordinance still has to be both found probable cause for it to be alleged in court and to be proven beyond reasonable doubt for conviction, the highest burden in the law. So each of the elements in A would have to be met. With that, I'm happy to take any questions on either topics that we've discussed in the work session or the executive summary given tonight.
Thank you very much. And we did talk about it quite a bit at a previous work session, and a recording of that would be available online. Any additional comments or questions from the council? Okay, then I will hold a hearing again. Open the hearing. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing and would accept a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Ordinance 2644 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, please vote.
So that will take us to our next agenda item, which I'm going to recuse myself since this is in my neighborhood, and I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Pro Tim Reed, and I'm going to excuse myself. If you can vote for me abstaining, that would be great.
I can do that.
All right, the next item on the agenda is item number 10, Otter Pond Dam Water and Sewer Relocation Expense Authorization. City Council consideration of $370,000 in reimbursement expenditures payable to Mountain Valley Contracting for the relocation of city water and sewer utilities around the Otter Pond Dam Replacement Project. City Engineers cover the...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. So typically, I don't go too deep in these. No change at all since the work session. There has been, Brubaker Mills is pretty strong in this area of town, or surrounding this project, so I'll give a quick overview. I'll try and keep it down to a couple of minutes, just for anybody who might be tuning in for the first time, as this project moves forward and more people become aware of it. So I've got the memo up here from the packet. So Otter Pond Dam is a, or Otter Pond and its associated dam are, it's a private dam in the Otter Pond neighborhood. For anybody not familiar with the area, this is just southeast of the rec center. So you have a pond surrounded by the neighborhood itself and a dam built on the northwestern side that creates the embankment for it, and then on top of that is the Otter Pond Circle Road right of way. The dam was, or the neighborhood was built around 1994. To kind of give you a feel of what the town looked like in 1994, this is an overlay of the historic aerial and where the dam was, quite a ways out from town, out there on its own, and you know, quite a bit of infrastructure extensions and things that were necessary to bring that online at the time. When they built this, whether, it never fell under the, or it was never permitted with the state or Bureau of Reclamation. At the time, it actually creates the pond by impounding the Bureau of Reclamations, which is operated by uncomprable valley water users, the F-drain. They just built the dam across it and put in some outlet works. Whether it was supposed to be done at the time, that's federal and state jurisdiction. So whether it was supposed to be permitted at the time is uncertain. There's really not much mention of it in the record. The, you know, maybe they contacted the state, and the state said, oh, it's far enough away, it's a low-hazard thing, we don't care, or we don't mind, it won't be under our purview. But something to keep in mind as I go deeper into the story. So then in late 2022, the city got a call that Otter Road, or Otter Pond Circle was experiencing some pretty large sinkholes right here, right over top of the outlet works of the dam. We brought our camera out, helped them investigate a little bit more, and it turns out the outlet works had corroded severely enough that it was eroding soil. They run full-time, the way the dam's built is it builds up to the outlet, and then everything that comes into the lake goes out of it at the same, you know, it's not throttled by any means, goes out through the outlet works. So you get continuous running of water through there most times of the year. The pipes corroded away, started eroding soil, created a pretty large cavern that can only hold itself for so long, and then those started falling into themselves. And that's where it started showing itself at the surface. At the same time, the Otter Pond HOA contacted the state, knowing that, you know, they were worried about losing the pond. We were too. You know, if that dam were to fail, the modeling now we have now shows that you'd get pretty substantial flooding into the rec center site and then all the way down Woodgate. So you'd be looking at likely tens of millions in damage should that pond fail. And nobody wanted that. The state quickly ordered them to, they put a fill threshold on it, so they had to draw the dam down and couldn't allow it to get above a certain level to keep that. Obviously, the more water you have behind the dam, the more prone you are to the failure. And so they ordered the reservoir be drawn down, then they started looking at jurisdiction modeling and determined that it was, in fact, under the state's jurisdiction and would need to be permitted, and more importantly, would need to be rebuilt and repaired to the state dam safety standards, which that's all a division of the Division of Water Resources, which is, I think, I think the hierarchy is a division of natural resources or something to that effect, but nonetheless, state government. After, and at that time, the city also to kind of help move this along in the name of protecting the public's interest from flooding, contributed $100,000 of available ARPA funds that were available to us at the time to help them kind of stabilize the situation. So get the drawdown going, get that in place, and get working towards design of replacement. The HOA, as the owner of the dam, hired Applegate Engineering to do the repair replacement plans. Those worked through since that initial event. And part of that was, you know, during the design, it came to light that the sewer line is in conflict with their proposed outlet works, and so they have a physical, want to be in the same place at the same time, two pipes at the outlet of the dam. And then, you know, we all started talking internally and with the state, and the water and sewer utilities which run through the dam are really not great for anybody should they ever need to be repaired or they ever have an issue. So if you imagine a pressure water pipe in a dam that has a leak, starts to erode, that can quickly lead to problems. Or if we need to dig up the sewer, we don't want to have to drain Otter Pond on a moment's notice, that would be bad for the neighborhood. But we also don't want to try and, or to, if we had to dig up or repair a pipe to do it as to a dam safety, or to a dam standard, you know, a simple, you know, $10,000 repair could become a half-million-dollar repair by the time you fold in all those layers of complexity. So we, we were interested, the HOA was interested, it was in both of our best interests to realign the water and sewer around the embankment. That's what this project proposes to do. So fortunately, the space allows for that to be done, so what we're looking at is on sheet three, I think, or the last attachment of the product here we had. Del might help us to feed that information into the overall package that the state would review that's being put together by Applegate to relocate the water line around the toe of the dam, so it's not even within the embankment. And then, again, fortunately, the grades worked out that we're able to run a sewer kind of straight north into a trunk line that goes underneath the Lutzenheizer Canal. So that's what's before you today. The request, or the authorization would be for 370,000. 220 of that is associated with the water line work and 150 with the sewer work. That is a smaller subset of the larger products. So again, this is an HOA-owned and operated dam. They're still doing the dam replacements, the outlet works. We're only funding the utility portions, again, kind of in all of our best interest to not only support that product, make their construction work, but to limit the, our utilities' long-term liabilities going into the future. They did an invitation for bids, they got two bids of the utility work, which we're approving here. Mountain Valleys was the 369, it rounded up to 37 in the authorization. The other contractor was 450. But it's kind of unique, you can see the pretty significant spread on the dam work there. So the overall project cost, you know, 996,000 versus 1.6 million with the second bidder. And I'll just speak to that a little bit, that it's complicated work, a lot of paperwork, obviously, that goes with doing these things in the state. As we know, our contracting pools are very busy, so we're seeing that in the number of bids and the pricing, and that reflects here. So we feel pretty lucky we got, that they got the bids that they did. This is being set up as a reimbursement because the, it's all under one contract, it's all under one purview of one design engineer, and that's under the state. The state requires that it be a single package under the purview of the design engineer. So the cleanest thing here is to have them have the single contract, and then we would just reimburse their contractor directly. The work itself, if all goes well, would start this fall, they're doing some, having some internal meetings with the HOA to get the contract authorizations in place and work through any outstanding issues. Assuming all that goes well, and then we just received, they just received comments from the state the end of last week, and so their designers working on updating those and getting that back to the state to get final approval on the plans. Assuming all of that comes together, they should be able to start this fall. And then this is, we knew these amounts going into the budget season, so the budgets that are in there do match these amounts, so right in line with what was budgeted, so. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Any council discussion, questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I do have a question.
We have a motion. Who, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Frank, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Murphy, on the, the drawing of the projected outlets, it shows the sewer going off from the western or eastern portion, going straight out to past the Lutzenheizer. Does that affect the sewer alignment on the other side of the dam, on the, the northwestern side?
No, it's a great question. So this area is kind of unique. They ran a line in Otter Pond Circle, and they ran one to the north of those houses. They're crazy deep, like 17 feet. I'm guessing that might be why. And we have the means to accommodate that with construction, but those lines, kind of this open space area here that's shown on the drawing, you all have a sewer line running north, north-south on each side of that. That joins a main at existing grade that runs east-west right along the Lutzenheizer, and then kind of on the west side of the picture here, the left side, is where collectively between those two lines come together and goes underneath Lutzenheizer and off to join into the trunk system that goes by the rec center. Yeah, great question.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Frank? Okay. Any further discussion? I think I forgot to ask for public comment, but seeing none, I would entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the $370,000 in reimbursement expenditure payable to Mountain Valley Contracting for the relocation of the city water and sewer utilities around Otter Pond Dam Replacement Project as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Okay, we have a four to one, we have four in favor and one abstention. Motion passes. Welcome back.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is item 11, a sanitary sewer CIP III Phase I Design Contract. And this is council consideration of professional services contract award to Delmont Consultants in the amount of $124,200 for completion of the sanitary sewer CIP III Project Phase I Design. City Engineer, Scott Murphy.
Thank you. So no changes since work session, really quick overview. As development and growth occurs, we kind of rely on our sanitary sewer master plan, which identifies growth areas and certain patterns of growth that would drive certain upsizing or improvements of the various trunk lines, sewer networks. Within that document, they recommend various capital improvement projects, that's what the CIP is here, to kind of stay ahead of that growth and maintain the system. So the next big one is CIP III. We finished one and two over the last five to seven years, and this is the next large one here. So this design study will look at fine-tuning the preliminary models that were done as part of the master plan, doing a lot of the survey and legwork necessary, fine-tuning the forecast projections to both quantify and identify any choke points now and then any choke points in the future, and when, when those would need to be upgraded and to what size. And then obviously, we can work towards implementation depending on the findings of that. May find that certain portions along this reach highlighted here are good for the foreseeable. We do know of a couple choke points, and we are seeing... do know of a couple choke points and we are seeing more development interest in this kind of northeastern quadrant of town, which would contribute to this line. So we want to, want to make sure that we don't get to a point where a project housing comes in and we can't serve it. We want to, because it takes a long time to get out ahead of these things. So just kind of planning for the long range capacity of the sewer system. So this project, we did a RFP, or request for qualifications essentially, proposals without pricing. We found sewer jobs be pretty sensitive to making sure you get the really good team, really good survey. Most importantly, we've had projects that have tried to go uphill from poor survey and those don't work out. Can cost the city a lot of money. So from that, the highest rated proposer was Delmont Consultants. We're joined by their president, David Shillet here. After that, we worked through fine tuning scopes and prices with them. The price they came back with was, was well within what we had anticipated. And I will note this is phase one of a, of a multiple phase design. So what this does is, you know, does all the survey work, all the modeling, and then evaluates alternatives. As you can see, it's a pretty erratic alignment there. So where opportunities exist to clean up, getting rid of any weird jogs that unnecessarily go out just to come back, kind of those things, make the alignment more efficient. And then, once we pick that alignment, figure out what's feasible, we then go into detailed design. And that's when we would come back for a, a change order to the contract to do phase two, once that's in scope. Can't really scope and price that right now because until we know what needs to be done and where, which is first phase will determine, we can't price that second phase. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thanks for being here.
Sure.
Any public comment? Seeing none, would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to award a professional services contract, excuse me, to Delmont Consultants in the amount of $124,200 for completion of the sanitary sewer CIP3 Project Phase One Design as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Last action item on our agenda tonight is the item 13, which is the Ancompadre Riverway Trail Landscaping Improvements Expense Authorization. And this is council's consideration of $100,000 in reimbursement expenditures for completion of landscaping improvements alongside the Ancompadre Riverway Trail north of, north Ninth Street. City Engineer, Scott Murphy.
And Madam Mayor, again, no changes since work session. I'll try and do it in a minute or less here. So when the connect trail was built, when Colorado Outdoors was kind of master planned, you know, we got the rec trail through there along the river, alongside the land that was donated to the city for public benefit. But we didn't landscape and do improvements alongside the trail because at the time, there wasn't anything to be alongside. So we didn't want to have random improvements without a, a draw for the public to complement it. And we wanted to make sure that the improvements are complementary and, and match what's going in on the, alongside the trail. So, you know, this is, this is something that will occur multiple times, you know, here and elsewhere on the trail as, as businesses build and center themselves towards a river. We want to be able to complement it with the public amenities on the, on the public side. And so in this case, this is the Shelter Distillery is kind of the first big one to go in there. That's the private side. On the back of their property, they'll have a patio with lawn games and serving areas, concerts, things of that sort. So on our side of the fence, or not fence, on our side of the property line, is kind of this red shaded area here. And there are certain portions that are off limits that we need to maintain for riparian, sensitive riparian areas, flood plain, things of that sort. But generally, this would consist of, you know, landscaping, you know, some landscaping boulders, benches, retaining wall, kind of tiered terrace areas, connector trail and a hitch and post. This isn't the perfect location for a takeout, given the outside bend. And there will be long range of formal takeout at Ninth. But for the interim and for some of those that are ready and willing, give them a place to tie off if you come down in a raft and want to go up and support your local distillery and have a lunch or something to that effect. So the work is being done as, as reimbursements because they have a, thankfully, contract, or landscaping contractors are hard to find these days. They do have a landscaping contractor secured for their site. So it just makes sense to have them do all this work. So it's continuous. There aren't contractors overlapping with each other. What they're proposing is reasonable rate-wise. So we're comfortable making a reimbursement recommendation in lieu of, you know, contracting with them directly. And, and the work will be, the reason we're going for it now, it's primarily a 24 project, but they may have an opening to start this fall. So just want to get the authorization in place so they can start if necessary. If not, the bulk of the work will be taking place in '24 in anticipation of their grand opening towards the end of '24.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
I, I, well, to be honest, in, in all good conscience, I can't support this based on the fact that after listening to yesterday's report of citizen satisfaction, and there was some concerns about traffic and sidewalks and roads, and we're spending $100,000 in landscape to help a business. When I drive around town and I find that, that some corners don't have handicap ramps on them, the streets have pipes that are up above almost the sidewalk. And I just feel that we should be spending more of our money, even though we have more money going into next year's budget for roads and sidewalks and stuff. That, that new amount, according to the study that the city did a few years ago, is just barely adequate enough to maintain the sidewalks and roads at their current levels. And according to the city satisfaction, that's not appropriate.
I'd like to address that if I could.
That's it.
Ed, I respectfully disagree with you on that. First of all, this is not for the business. This is on the public right of way, on the public trail, not landscaping on private property. And I think that, like all of these things, we have to take into consideration all of our obligations when we do things like this. And I think that in our proposed budget for 2024, we are addressing the needs that you're talking about. And granted, they are serious needs. By the same token, I think we also have an obligation when we talk about the health, safety and welfare of our community, is to continue to beautify it and make it attractive to people. And again, this is on public property, not private property. So my position would be is, while I understand what you're saying and I don't disagree with you, I think this is an appropriate expenditure of the city's funds.
Thank you. Additional comments, question? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve $100,000 in reimbursement expenditures for completion of landscaping improvements alongside the Ancompadre River Trail north of North Ninth Street as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Please vote. Can you record it over there? It kicked about a minute. It's back in, but it's still not letting him close. Thank you. And that passes at four to one vote. Okay, next on our agenda, that was our last action item that we'll be voting on. And then, item 13, we have a staff report. And this is our sales use and excise tax report. And our finance director, Shani Wittemberg, is going to give us that information.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. This is the sales use and excise tax report for August of 2023 as compared to the same time period in 2022. General fund sales and use tax is collected at 3%. August compared to August of 2022, retail sales tax is up 3.7%. Construction use tax down 57.3%. Use and auto use tax up 25.5% with total collections up almost 3% and a positive budget variance of 13.1%. Year-to-date sales and use tax compared to the same time period in 2022, retail sales tax is up 7.8% or $1.173 million. Construction use tax down 66% or $524,000. Use and auto use tax up 2.1% or $22,000 with total collections up 4% or $671,000 and a positive budget variance year-to-date of 13.5% or $2 million. Public safety sales and use tax, this is the 0.58% that's collected for public safety. And the voters voted on it in November 5th, 2019. It was effective January 1st of 2020. Public safety fund retail sales tax in August compared to August of 2022 is up 3.2%. Construction use tax is down 52.6%. Use and auto use tax up 25.5% with total collections up 2% and a positive budget variance of 8.8%. Year-to-date sales and use tax compared to 2022 for the public safety fund, retail sales tax is up 7.4% or $218,000. Construction use tax down 9.1% or $16,000. Use and auto use tax up 2.1% or $4,000 with total collections up 6.2% or $206,000. The positive budget variance year-to-date of 13.4% or $415,000. The Montrose Recreation District, this 0.3% was added to the sales tax back in 2014. And in August of 2023, we collected $235,329 or 2% more than we did in August of 2022. Year-to-date, we've collected $1,817,260 or 6.2% more than we did through August of 2022, which equates to $106,000. Excise taxes, hotel excise tax adds 0.9%. Restaurant excise tax adds 0.8% to the sales tax rate. And in August compared to August of 2022, hotel excise tax is up 23.9%. Restaurant excise tax up 7.6% with total collections up 11.8% and a positive budget variance of Year-to-date collections, hotel excise tax is up 22.8% or $25,000. Restaurant excise tax is at 10% or $40,000 with total collections up 12.8% or $65,000. Positive budget variance year-to-date of 40.3% or $165,000. Retail sales enhancement, this is the portion of the vendor's fee that businesses voted to give to the city to promote retail sales in Montrose. And in August, we collected $56,366 or almost 5% more than we did in August of 2022. Year-to-date, we've collected $426,000 or almost 7% more year-to-date, which equates to about $27,000. With that, I will entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Not too bad.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, any additional comments, questions for tonight's meeting?
Well, I'd just like to thank the finance department. You guys have been working all year and bringing this together at this time. And I think that's fantastic and it looks good.
Yes, thank you for a great budget open house. As usual, we didn't have a huge overwhelming amount of public attendance, but those who were here got their questions answered. And you are always available for individuals who have any questions about our finances or budget. Any other comments? Okay. Were there any other staff reports? I'm sorry, I kind of skipped over that. Anything else that we need to be updated on?
I can give a quick street update.
That's always good.
We are done paving for the year. So Anderson has paved. The Abrams, remember that drainage ice dam issue we were fixing over there, that is done and paved. And 6700 is paved. So I'm working on striping tomorrow. They should have it striped by the end of the week. The contractor is working on some roadside cleanup and all that. So the intersection at Miami and 6700 should likely be open the end of this week. And then the main line should be open, depending on the main line striper's schedule and some of the signage and stuff that they're still waiting on. Should be open possibly as early as like two weeks from now. They'll work on the sidewalks and a lot of the, just general fill on the backs of the roads still. That'll take place with their main line road open. So a couple weeks out, she'll be, she'll be working, which is good because the Niagara Hill Crest project is out to bid and that relies on that detour. So just in time.
I have a question. There's this huge pile of structural fill, I believe, that's leftover from 6700 Road. Are they planning on using that on that? Or?
Yeah, that product was set up, the, all the spoils generated from the product generally were being used as overlot grading behind the lots, which is great for us, saves the hauling of having to haul it elsewhere and saves all that damage on our roads. So what you're seeing out there, there are a couple small, like road-based piles that those will get used on the sidewalks. So there's more needed than what those piles are. So those piles will get used up. Because of the trucking challenges we've generally had, they got in the habit of stockpiling a lot of material whenever they could get trucks so that they weren't, you know, pinned down with a paver coming and waiting on trucks to get some base in the ground. The remainder of the soil, a lot of it looks like structural fill because it's, it's kind of bank run. And that's why you see that crushing operation out east of there. The area has quite a bit of bank run river type materials that look like structural fill, but they're actually native. So a lot of that'll go, that and some of the, there's clays, it's kind of a mixed bag. But all of that will go into the overlot grading on the area that we worked with those owners to accept those soils as part of the overall 6700 project. And then the really tall piles are topsoil that they stripped from the first, when the product started. And then they'll put that along all the embankments, all of the finished areas, spread that out over the whole length of the project. So they have something that hopefully can get some degree of revegetation. It's kind of hard to do around here.
Okay. I was just curious. I saw it there. I'm going, I wonder where they're going to put it.
Yep. That'll all get put in as controlled fill, so moisture conditioned, put in lifts, compacted throughout the entire area. It's quite a bit, we had a similar thing when we did the URA. Some of that general site fill came up two or three feet. And it takes, I mean, it takes several, it's several weeks just of earthwork to get all that down.
Sounds like we're saving a lot of work and time and cost by not moving it off-site and then bringing dirt back later when we need it at the end of the project. So that's what it's doing there.
Yep. Yep. So we still have to import quite a bit, but yeah, we don't have to haul off the, all the spoils.
Great. So it'll all get used and there won't just be piles there forever.
Yep, totally. Yep.
I've seen them hauling asphalt at 5:00.
Yeah, they, their contract probably had a completion date on it or something.
Yes, they get very motivated towards it. And weather. So, you know, running out of, you know, we lost a day with the rain and the, and the cooler temperatures because we can, you know, we have higher temperatures, we can do on the bottom mat, but that top mat requires higher temperatures. So, or we can do, yeah, higher threshold on the bottom and go lower temperature. So, yeah, it worked out great and product is, it looks great. Very pleased with it, yeah.
Great, thank you. Any other staff or council questions? Then I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
I'm so moved. We're adjourned.
Second.